I'd like to call me to order Jackson County Commission. I'd like to welcome everyone today. We'll start with the roll call. Mr. Man.
Yes, sir. District one, Mr. Fitts.
Present.
District two, Mr. Venable.
Present.
District three, Mr. Duff.
Present.
District four, Mr. Seitz.
Present.
Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Man. Now we have implications with Mr. John Ford.
God, our Father in heaven, we're blessed. We're blessed to live in this country, God. We are so thankful for our independence, for our freedoms that we have. We do pray that we'll never take them for granted, that we'll always defend those freedoms, the individual freedoms that we have and those that we have as a society. So, God, we pray you'll continue to watch over us, bless us through this independence day. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Now, if you'll go on, Mr. Venable, and place the leadges.
I'll place the leadges to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
First thing we have is approval of the agenda for next meeting. We have motion to approve the agenda.
No, not the motion, please.
We have a motion, we have a second?
No, second motion.
We have a motion and a second. On the paper say I, all opposed, say no. Next we have public comment from citizens. We have done tonight. Next we have a discussion item at the commission. First thing is discuss outsourcing the Pancroft Valley Park and five boat ramps for Jackson County Park. And we have Mr. Carl Barnes here to discuss this with us.
Any other package you should have, later that I fixed about how much it cost us for us to go to the Pancroft Valley and do five boat ramps. If we got rid of them, we could get rid of our part-time person. If you have a person with six months or longer, in the summertime, we could just have for three months. And that would cut back on labor, cut back on wearing tire with vehicles, lawn mowers, weed eaters, gas. It takes us around an hour to get down there because we're pulling a 21-foot trailer with two mowers and sometimes a gator and a 21-foot trailer. Takes about an hour to get there and an hour to get back and 10 hours to move. Most of the time spent on the road. Boat ramps. The only thing that they would get from us is that we could let them use the... You get about eight or nine bags of garbage from the boat ramps about every two weeks. So, we could let them use our dumpsters to put it in. That's where it goes anyway. So, I can't see anybody having a dumpster at their house in order to put their garbage. So, that's the only thing that we would give them.
I'm in this park over at Frenchton now and talked with Carl about it. That's over in my area. And I just sent this on agenda and talked to the guy that was on the park board. He said, you know, he said, "See if you can hold off on this right now." He said, "'Cause we just lost school. We sure don't want to be just stranded for the park." He said, "Basically, we hadn't had a whole lot offered to us." They would like to have a place kind of put in for a volleyball... Not a volleyball, yeah, volleyball court. He said, "That way we could play volleyball, band bitten or whatever, and maybe horseshoes." And I told Carl, you know, what they had told me. I said, "Right now, I'd like to hold up on it and see on the Frenchton Park for sure."
Well, they're not wanting to stop doing it. He just want to outsource it to somebody else to do it.
Yeah, I would have the... As a citizen, I would have the, you know, if I go and look at it and lay out done what they put through, they gotta come back.
He would just let it outsource, let somebody else do it, and we pay them. And in doing that, his estimation is $17,000 savings.
I mean, that's not... I mean, if I go down and do a bad job.
Well, I mean, the $17,000 savings would be, well, it's costing us right now. But then we have to actually find the savings. We'd have to subtract what it costs us to contract it out, right?
But if we... But if we can't contract it out, no cheaper than that, then we'll contract it out.
Basically, each of them take your way to get bid as soon as they see.
Well, I'm saying, it's hard down there right now. We can't keep up with it because, I mean, it's raining every day. And I've got people complaining at Northside Mountain. I got people complaining everywhere. "Well, I need my grass mowed." Well, you know, the cash cow is at Jackson County Park. And we've got to maintain it, and we've got to maintain all the rest of them too. So, it's kind of hard.
Yeah.
But, you know, what I got.
And I can't think where it would hurt to entertain bids, just to see where it would...
See where it's not costing, yeah.
If there's no objection, we'll put this on the agenda for the next meeting to obtain bids to see.
Now, we're gonna have... What does it require for this, Carl?
This is what it requires. The only thing I like, I didn't put in there and I should have was liability insurance and workers' law.
Yeah.
That's what they need to do.
We can state that when the bids go out that they have to have that.
Right, and I can put it in this also.
Is any more discussion concerning this? We'll move forward with it on the next commission meeting.
They say we need to be clear on the boat ramps. About picking up the trash would be part of the deal on that outsourced, correct?
Right.
The trash, heating and trash at the boat ramps is part of the outsourced, correct?
Yes, yes, yes. The only thing we're gonna do is let them use our dumpsters to put the trash in.
It'll be all on the post.
Now, as you said, the states in our November, December, or December, January, February, will take care of the trash as part of it. Because that's just a nine... It's gonna be just a nine-month thing. So, let's keep that in mind, you know, when we get the bids back in. The only thing that has to be done is the trash at the boat ramps. And that's about every two to three, maybe three weeks, so...
You got to mind letting this out in one bid package then, you know, most of the time.
Yeah.
For the park. If we get bid, somebody just wants to do the part they live over, they're close by or something, just wants to do the park.
That would make some mistakes. Then I could do it cheaper. Because that's the one you said was so far out of the way, right?
Yeah, it takes us a long to get down there, but it's a long to keep it up.
So, we might need to do it... The boat ramps in one group and then the park in another.
That would be fine.
A combo.
But as long as we don't, you know, hit this mark here, you know what I'm saying?
I don't think it would hurt to bid it out that way because you could always, you know, somebody can bid on both. And if they're combined, it's cheaper than splitting it up and we could split it up, but...
The reason why I'm bringing it up right now, we got budgets coming in, I think nine to 12. So, now we're not gonna have nothing on this done by then, but it's just something to think about while we're doing the budget, I guess.
Right. Okay, we're gonna bid this separately or we're gonna... I would like to see it separated out like that.
One other question on this maintenance. What does this require? Now, I know grass mowing is in the summertime, all these boat ramps and stuff. What is the deal in the wintertime?
In the wintertime, it's just picking up trash.
Just trash.
That's all we're gonna do.
But these are...
But that would still be part of their contract?
No, this is just for nine months.
Just nine months.
Right. December, January, February, we're gonna go pick the trash up. Starting March 1st, they're gonna have to start it and mow and weed eat spray.
That's what I wanted to understand.
It's a 59-month contract.
Yeah.
As much as it's been raining, I can see where y'all bidding. I had difficulty keeping up. There's a lot of grass at the park and then you get one end of the counter to the other.
Yeah, and it's seven acres at the park. We got eight acres at Northside Mountain. We got 10 acres up at Northside Mountain, and then we got five boat ramps. And then plus, we gotta take care of everything else at the park, electrical, plumbing, you know, whatever. And it puts the drain on.
Okay, is everybody okay with splitting this bid up, getting the boat ramps in one bid and then the mowing in another bid?
Yes.
If the same person wants to bid on both of them, they can, that way. Okay, I'll put this on the agenda for the next commission meeting. Okay, next, number two item is to discuss specifications for heating and air-conditioning system for the Jackson County Courthouse. And, Mr. Duffy, I believe this is your expertise.
We're just gonna take the...
Specifications.
We got the specifications and put it out there and see what kind of numbers we get to come back. But right now, we ain't gonna have an idea what it's gonna cost. So, we're just putting it out there and see how many bids we can back on.
Just for information, we probably have enough money in captain program fund to take care of this. Is any more discussion concerning this? Well, if there's no objection, I'll place this on the agenda for the next commission meeting. Number three, discuss appointment to the EDA board. You'll notice in your packet that we have several people here that it's asked to be considered for this. We have six. Ask that y'all study things over and then if there's no discussion on this, we'll put it on the agenda for the next commission meeting. Move on to number four. Discuss appointment for the Cumberland Mountain Water and Fire Protection Board. Also have that in the packet. And we have two on there. The signs, you look them over and if there's no objection, we'll place this on the agenda for the next commission meeting. And then you'll also see in your packet, number five, discuss two appointments to the Jackson County E-911 Board. And I believe we have three for that. There's two positions on there. So, if there's no objection, we'll place this on the agenda for the next commission meeting. We'll move on to number six, discuss bids for the base, concrete pavement, and shoulders for County Roads 107, 33, 137, and 261. And I believe Mr. Campbell handed out some information concerning that. And you have a grid form. Mr. Campbell, you wanna get with sort of nothing on it?
Sure. Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. So, just as a review, sometime back, this commission approved movement board with seven material tax project in the form of this concrete pavement in locations throughout the county where there was severe damage, particularly in areas where we're experiencing heavy truck traffic, moving a lot of material in and out of these places of business. So, a plan set was developed and bids were solicited and those, the bid packets were opened this morning. And so, those three bid tabs, we did have three bidders. Those bid tabs are included in your packets. And our estimate, we were about $330,000 was our estimate back when we submitted this concept for approval, just to give you some kind of baseline on the bids. I wanted to provide these tabs just so you could see, have some comparative data on, you know, where these prices came in, even on the unit item place. So, all the bids, I guess you could say, were in the bracket, the apparent low bidder. They left the lower end of our anticipation dollar amounts. And there was some concern about unit items within that bid as compared to the other data. So, we had a conversation with this bidder to make sure, to have confirmation before presenting this to you all. And there was, in complete disclosure, they did admit that there was a mistake on one of the line items on their bid, in particular the Crush Tag Base Course. That 650 is per ton. And that was a mistake that was misinterpreted as a square yard. Most of the items without dot are a square yard unit price when it comes to that line item because it's specified on a thickness layer. However, due to this application with a large excavation, the fact that it's going over large aggregate riprap and the voids are there. We wanted to give everybody a fair shape, and the best way to do that is pay coverage. So, that's pretty cut and dry when you're receiving tickets from the loads delivered. So, that's why it was done that way. But it was their admittance that there wasn't error on that part. After analyzing it further and discussions with us, they wanted to hold their bid. They said they felt like it was a good number, that was a good profitability for them. And they were still interested in moving forward. So, I had, I sent written correspondence notifying them that if they did not want to move forward, since there was an error in their bid, to notify us in writing within three working days from the date that we opened. To disclaim the error and provide evidence a flint was an error. And then it would be obviously up to you guys for them to accept a withdrawal. So, the last word we had is they are interested in moving forward and want to be considered as, and they are the apparent low bidder. So, I wanted to present this information in case there are any questions about it, about that or this couple of works, like the plans with me, have the bid documents that we sent out. It's all advertised in accordance with the bid law. So, I have those documents for me if there are any questions between now or next week if we decide to move forward. Also, in your packet, I passed out a cash balance sheet as a funds. And seven general tax fund is $119. So, you can see that cash balance sits in there that we would be looking to fund this project with.
Are you saying the payment of this project's coming out of $119?
Yes, sir.
It looks like the balance on $119 will be sufficient enough for the little bit.
Yes, sir. Are there any questions about, about anything in what I said or the bid tab as yet?
You just got the three bids?
Yes, sir.
Three, four, five. First thing we're looking at right there, John, are they figuring on the same thing right here on the classified excavation?
Well, I went back to our estimate, and that was close to our estimate. Obviously, the other bidders are a lot higher, but, you know, it's all over the place. You got, you got the highest bidder and then the other guy's half of that. And then the one you're looking at's half of that. So, they were close. We had estimated about $10. We had $20 if you could guard. So, they're not too terribly far off, but that was the question. When you start looking at some of those items, particularly the aggregate items and that unclassified excavation, there's a drastic difference between them.
The deal favorite exists in there. Nine minutes versus three dollars and twenty minutes. Even cones right there, you know, that one right there is $5 a cone different.
The aggregate was a concern. You know, we can't even buy the material for... You know, that's about our purchase price for just the material. So, I had a feeling that that was something that... But, you know, if you look at the low bidder and the next low bidder, there's not a fairly large amount of difference there. And our estimate at 330 is not too far off that low bidder. So, that's what led us to the conversation, just, you know, want to confirm it. And I think they've molded over and they're still, they're still good with that one.
Any more discussion?
And the three projects that were on this?
Actually, four.
Four?
They will be...
33...
107, 137, and 261.
Call it out, zoom it.
107, 37.
Yeah, so 107 is in front of the board, the area there. 33, same thing. 137 is concrete plant and a remodel facility also serves right from that area. And 261 is the log yard.
Yeah, that's the one I can remember up there.
If there's no objection, we'll place this on the agenda for the next commission meeting. Number seven, we'll discuss the purchase of two sanitation trucks. And Darrell, I'd like you to take it from here.
Thank you, Mr. Ashen. I'd like to replace the purchase of two 2019 Mack automatic garbage trucks. The trucks that we will be replacing, these are 2015s. And we typically replace them about every three to four years, usually three, but we push these out four years. They've done pretty good for us. There's an estimated value of approximately what they would bring if we resold those. But I would like to gather some more information for those trucks. And I'd like to get back in another work session and discuss that a little bit farther on those. With that being said, we purchased a few couple of trucks in 2017. And we still have two payments that we've got to make on those. And the amount is listed there below that, one this month here and then the other ones pay off in 2019. The replacement trucks that we're going to be purchasing, and you can see the cost right there in the fourth line down, there'd be two of them at $272,000 each for a total of $556,000. And then our cash balance is below that. And I think what I'd like to do, and Bob has discussed it a little bit, probably go ahead and leave those two payments as is, pay them, pay them off, one this year and one next year. But go ahead and consider buying, purchasing these other two trucks from our cash balance.
Any more discussion?
These two that you're talking about, the 15s, Darrell, I'm reading this right.
Yes, sir.
Of course, you said you're gonna have some more information.
Yep.
That's $130,000 each?
$130,000 each would be an approximate price they would bring if we surplus them. I've got something else I'm working on, and I'd like to present that to y'all. One, I think what I would like to do with one of them is keep it and get rid of some of my older stuff that I've got. I got a 2008 auto car that's really old and we're out there. We have to drive a lot. It's ready to go. And then I have a 2012 Mack with a blown engine. Placed it on Gov Deal once before. It didn't bring no money at all. With that being said, I've got a company that's interested in doing some trading on the trucks that I'm fixing to be purchasing. And I'd like to talk to y'all about doing that in the future. With one of the other trucks, well, the second truck, I've been talking to another gentleman about taking and selling the bed off of it and putting a roll-off bed on it and convert it into a roll-off truck. Should cost us at that point, if we do that in the future, around $50,000, $60,000. And that would give us a second roll-off truck for in case if our first one goes down, tears up, or we get into a bind. But I need to gather the rest of that information on that project first and discuss it later. If we choose not to go with that, then we'll put these two trucks up here for sale. And we'll come close to the range of $130,000 a piece, which would put money back into our funds.
So, we'd like to move forward with the purchase of the truck?
Purchasing two trucks right now.
And wait till the next work session to talk about disposal of these other trucks?
Yes, whether we're gonna surplus them or do something different with them.
Right. Any more discussion concerning this? Okay, if there's no objection, we'll place this on the agenda for the purchase of the two new trucks. And then we will make note that we will discuss the disposal of these trucks at the next work session. Next, we have discussed school safety advisory board guidelines. And I believe you'll find this in your packet. And this was, we just got that this afternoon. I don't know if you've had time to look at it or have had time to look at it, but I want to bring it out there for you to look at. Now, Mr. Venable, what would be the course of action to take with this now? We'd have to...
Tell us more about that.
We'd have to, when time is right, we'd have to adopt this.
Yes, sir.
In a resolution?
Right, there would be a resolution that the commission would adopt, setting up the funds so Mr. Manning can set up the special fund within his records. And then we give the notice to whoever, we're gonna give the notice to, and adopt these guidelines. And then we'll get the advisory board appointed so that they can begin to do their work.
We need to, or I haven't read this, but it may already be in there, but the funds, we need to name the fund number or anything in the resolution?
I have named it the school safety fund, but you can name it whatever you want to.
I mean, what?
Yeah, we can... Oh, yeah, Bob would sign the number to it.
Find one that's open.
Yeah, whatever.
Do you want to move forward with this, or you want to go to another work session?
We can move forward with it next weekend and give everybody a read over this. And if there's any adjustments we can take with it at that time, but I would like to...
We have it done for August 11th.
Okay. So, if there's no objection, I'll place this on the agenda for the next commission meeting. Next, number nine, I'd like to discuss advising the flood damaged prevention ordinance, the flood plain and the flood plain administrator position. Basically, what it says currently, the flood plain management is done in emergency management office. And the director is the flood plain manager. We'd like to move that from the EMA office to the, make this responsibility of the chief mapper. And we do have flood ordinance that spells it out this way, that it is a requirement of emergency management to do that. And the reason being is that they're just new technology that's out there, that the chief mapper has and is able to use good. And nowhere else in the courthouse has the capability that they have. And also, the chief mapper is involved with the DECA, who is the go-to agency for anything with the flooding within the state. There's application process and a certificate that is given to people whose property is not in the flood zone. And it's also in this office, it has to do with people that are in the flood zone that can apply for a LAMA that will get them out of flood zone. And currently, FEMA is right now remapping the Gunners River watershed. So, for us to stay in compliance, we've got to do a little bit better job in getting some of this stuff done. And I'm asking you to consider moving this and revising the flood damage prevention ordinance to have this under the control of the chief mapper.
Someone that has the technology to afford it?
Well, in building houses, I have contact with the mapping department.
Right.
What went on with the EMA department?
Well, when I was with EMA, I did this for seven years. And the DECA's website is a lot better than it used to be. But you can go down here to the chief mapper and give him a address. And a matter of minutes, you're looking at something that used to take maybe 20. Of course, he's got new technology and it moved forward.
Got the ability to do it with all weapon compliance.
Right, right. And there's millions of dollars worth of flood insurance out there. We certainly don't want to go in non-compliance there. Now, I've got a question, Mr. Porter, concerning this, since this is an ordinance. What is it meant to change, the wording in ordinance?
I need to look at the exact language. It may be a just amendment to an existing ordinance rather than re-adoption. Hopefully, it'd be just amendment rather than re-adoption. Because if it's re-adoped, then you have published the letter. And publication cost would be extensive.
I need to just... That's the ordinance itself. Yeah, if there's no objection, we'll place this on the agenda for the next commission meeting with speculation that Mr. Porter's finding it's on there. Next, we have reports from staff. Rocky? Darrell?
Yes, sir.
Bob?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
John?
Yes, sir. If I may, if I may, I can start. I handed out those documents that you shipped on your packets. It was made me lay on top. But those are the results from the County Route 42 Go-To-Aid Reception Project that left this past Friday. There were two, there were two bidders very close in final months that we bid. So, I assume there won't be any hesitation in awarding this. And then just on the sticky that was on that page, you can see our engineering staff's estimates and how they compare to the final bids. Our estimate, that amount listed is what the engineering department estimated, that's Ms. Manning and her staff, and then below the funding agreement. So that is the agreement that ALDOT set the agreement at, which dictated our match amount. So hopefully, if things go as planned, we should get a substantial rebate if all that works well. But I just wanted to tip our hats to Ms. Manning and her staff for being within 3% of the estimate. That's really good. And good close numbers, so go get about those.
Okay, thank you. Carl, you have anything?
The Williams, I'm picking one up. Cut down a tree, that's one time now.
Ms. Porter, you have anything? I don't have anything tonight. So this, this is all we have on today's agenda, so that I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
How much a motion?
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. On Thursday, aye? Opposed, say no. Meeting adjourned.